We are going to call our meeting together tonight. I apologize for being late. We had a pre-meeting and we're going to kick off our meeting tonight with something a little bit different. We have a spotlight and we are spotlighting tonight our students, our musical teachers extraordinaire, and our piano player extraordinaire, Pastor Tim Rauch. And Pastor Tim has been doing this for 15 years. Is that close? Lot of years, yeah, okay. So, and we wanted to spotlight them tonight. This weekend will be the play Les Mis and we Les Miserables, for you French people. And we want to highlight, we want to kick it off and do a little bit of marketing here. So we're going to hear from three of our students with solos. Pastor Tim will play the piano for us and we want to recognize Jody and John also. So take it away, maestro.
I'm a senior and I play fontine and I will be singing "I Dreamed a Dream." There was a time when love was kind and the world was a song and the song was exciting. There was a time when men were kind and their voices were soft and the world was exciting. There was a time it all went wrong. I dreamed a dream in time gone by when hope was high and life worth living. I dreamed that love would never die. I dreamed that God would be forgiving. Then I was young and unafraid and dreams were made and used and wasted. There was no ransom to be paid, no song unsung, no wine untasted. But the tigers come at night with their voices soft as thunder as they tear your hope apart, as they turn your dream to shame. He slept a summer by my side. He fills my days with endless wonder. He took my childhood in his stride but he was gone when autumn came. And still I dream he'll come to me that we will live the years together. But there are dreams that cannot be and there are storms we cannot weather. I had a dream my life would be so different from this how I'm living, so different now from what it seemed. Now life has killed the dream I dreamed.
I'm a senior and I play eponine and I'll be singing on my own. Now I'm all alone again, nowhere to go, no one to turn to. Without a home, without a friend, without a face to say hello to. And now the night is near, now I can make believe he's here. Sometimes I walk alone at night when everybody else is sleeping. I think of him and then I'm happy with the company I'm keeping. The city goes to bed and I can live inside my head. On my own pretending he's beside me. All alone I walk with him till morning. Without him the world around me changes. And when I lose my way I close my eyes and he has found me. In the rain, the pavement shines like silver. All the lights are misty in the river. In the darkness, the trees are full of starlight. And all I see is him and me forever and forever. And I know it's only in my mind that I'm talking to myself and not to him. And although I know that he is blind, still I say, there's a way for us. I love him but when the night is over, he is gone. The river's just a river. Without him the world around me changes. The trees are barren everywhere, the streets are full of strangers. I love him but every day I'm learning. All my life I've only been pretending. Without me his world will go on turning. The world that's full of happiness that I have never known. I love him, I love him, I love him but only on my own.
My name is Jackson Rayner. I'm also a senior and I play Jean Valjean and will be singing "Bring Him Home." In my need, you have always been there. He is young, he's afraid. Let him rest, heaven blessed. Bring him home, bring him home, bring him home. He's like the son I might have known if God had granted me a son. The summers die one by one, how soon they fly on and on. And I am old and will be gone. Bring him peace, bring him joy. He is young, he is only a boy. You can take, you can give. Let him be, let him live. If I die, let me die. Let him live. Bring him home, bring him home, bring him home.
Thank you. That was beautiful. Could we get you all to come up here, please? John and Jody, come up. Well, that's okay. You've done a few musicals around here and we want to honor you tonight, anyway. John, do you want to say a few words about Tim?
Sure.
And about the musical?
And I brought Kleenex because I know you'd be kind of a weepy. Tim and I started working together back in 1996 and it was the first year that I had been involved with the production at the high school. And I'm not a really good piano player. So I was asking around, is there anybody in the community that plays piano? And I don't even remember who it was, but somebody said, yeah, there's this Lutheran pastor named Rauch or something. So I had to like check with all the Lutheran churches in St. Louis Park and I found Tim and I was like, you know what, you'd be interested in doing this? And he was like, well, you know, I was a piano major in college before I went into the ministry and sure, I would do it. And it's just been unbelievable since. He and I have done, we figured, the only way I could remember like what shows we had done is I'd actually included them on a resume. So I went back to a resume and looked at all the things. And we've done 13, I think, is what we figured.
Plus the choir ones.
And then plus the choir ones, which was weird because when Tim and I were talking about it, I completely spaced that we started doing them with choir. I was only thinking the ones that we do with the high school. He's a phenomenal player, can play just about anything, can sight read just about anything, any temple. I mean, fast things are just monumental. But the thing that I appreciate the most is his generosity, not only that he comes in and volunteers to do this, but the generosity of spirit in working with students. We don't, I, we see it when he's working with the kids in the musicals and stuff like that, but the one, a story that I want to share is that he accompanies band and choir and orchestra kids for solo and ensemble contests. And there was a year, several years back, so, you know, I'm not going to give away any names or anything like that, so it's somebody who's gone. But he came in and worked with a student that really, really wanted to do it. And, you know, was somebody that hadn't had a lot of training on their own. And I think he came in, I want to say like five, six times. And wouldn't you know, that kid got a superior at contests. And I thought, that is just so Tim Rauch. And that student so owed that superior to Tim Rauch. So Tim, I just want to say, I so appreciate everything you've done and I consider him such a good friend. It's just unbelievable what you've offered, both the school, the students, and especially just making St. Louis Park a better place to live and work. So thank you, Tim. Bruce is giving me free license to plug the show. The choir has started doing, and we're, the kids know this full well, too, that we're trying to get out of doing like a staged musical every year because it's just, it's pretty taxing. So this year we decided to do a concert version and prior to my even knowing that Les Mis was coming out as a movie, during the summer I thought, it's a big cast, there's a big chorus, and that was always my main concern was if we're going to do something like this for choir. And we used it as a fundraiser. So I had seen once when we went to contests at Minnetonka that Minnetonka had done like a big production in the spring of the year and they used it as their choir fundraiser. And I thought, well, I think this is something we could do. We use the proceeds from it to fund artist-in-residencies. We got help from the foundation, but this was a year that we didn't. But because we've been doing it, we had enough that we could still have somebody come in and actually direct it because the music is so intensive that I can only concentrate on the music. So I decided to do Les Mis, but in a concert format. So it's kind of like a concert semi-staged, it's not a ton of scenery, there are costumes, but the singers come forward and sing at microphones and then just with facial expression kind of acting it out. So it's not a fully staged production. The profits have made not only fund, you know, an artist-in-residence, but they've also helped students that are going on tour to Chicago this year defray the cost by about $1,500. And then also allowed some kids that could pay the full price to kind of do it on installment plans a little longer than what we normally would have. So it's been a huge thing. It does open this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday at 7:00 and Sunday at 2:00. You can get tickets at the box office and you can also go through the foundation. And that's one of the great things with connection with Bruce. If you go to www.slppsf.org, there's a hyperlink on there and if you go there, you can just order them online, which is great. So students, Tim is playing in the pit, which is awesome, but the pit's on stage. So it's like a concert version, so they'll be on stage. And come on, bring your friends, go multiple times. We'd just love to have you. So yes, thanks for the opportunity to do that.
Now, I'm going to give out our certificates and recognition and especially to our seniors. We have a tradition here in Park of doing musicals and doing plays. Our drama group is absolutely out of this world, our choruses are out of this world. And we want to recognize our three seniors, our two teachers, and Pastor Tim here tonight. So Maddie? John? And Pastor Tim.
Okay, now we're going to squeeze together here.
Excellent. If it's not, I'm not like, there you go.
Thanks, you guys. That was beautiful.
Perfect. Three, one, two, three. Bruce, if you could back up just a little bit, I'll try and get a little bit of everything.
I like being out front.
All right, one, two, and three. Thank you and thank you, Bruce. A pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator, if that doesn't fill the house this weekend, the performance tonight, I don't know what will, so, thank you.
We would love to keep you all here for the school board meeting, but I realize you have studies and other things to do. So thank you again. At this time, we'll do our call to order with the approval of the agenda. Open forum tonight. Cindy, is there anybody for open forum tonight? Okay, no one has appeared yet. The superintendent's report. Item five on the agenda is discussion items, the facilities task force options update, the fiscal year 2013 integration revenue budget update, which we will also hit on the action agenda, quarterly financial update, district bond projects, fiscal year 2013 budget amendments discussion, athletic conference discussion, 2013-2014, 2014-2015 calendar discussion. Then we'll do our consent agenda, the action agenda, which has three items on it. As I mentioned, the 2014 integration revenue budget approval of the calendars and approval of the fiscal 2013 budget amendments. Finally, communications and transmittals and then adjournment. And it's a pretty full schedule tonight, so... Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Larry. Second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? That's a six oh vote. And we will move ahead. Since there's no one here for open forum, we will go to the superintendent's report.
Well, it's hard to believe, but we are getting ready for next year. Our high school seniors have all registered for classes next year and we will begin the staffing process that goes along with that. In addition, kindergarten roundup is March 19th. So all of you out there with kindergarteners that are thinking about coming to school here in St. Louis Park, please go to the roundup. And if you need to find out information about which school that your child should go to, please call us here at the district office, 952-928-6000. And it was great hearing the kids saying, wow, that's just a nice way to start the meeting. Thank you very much. This ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers. And we'll now jump right into the discussion items. We're going to see an awful lot of Sandy tonight. So Sandy Salin, our financial director, will kick this off. This will be the discussion of the facilities task force options update.
It will be just one moment as we get this.
Okay. I am here with Paul Aplikowski from Old Architect, which I'm going to hand it off to him shortly to give you an update on our elementary facility utilization committee task force, which we have been meeting for a few times now and do intend to meet again on Wednesday to discuss some options as well as far as solving some of the space issues within our elementary schools. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Paul Aplikowski, who will give you an update on our last meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to make sure I emphasize that this is really just an update on the group. They're not quite done with their work. There's one more meeting. Hopefully we'll come to a resolution on everything for that one. Tonight, we're going to highlight a little bit of our process. We've been meeting since December. We've reviewed capacity in the buildings. We've talked about the enrollment projections that the district had done last summer. We've spent some time working through various options and so we've had quite a bit of discussion on that. And if you remember, as part of the capacity calculations, one of our methodologies is to make what we call assumptions or the parameters that go into that capacity. And recently, the group asked us to review those parameters and look at whether or not we had adequately covered discussions about space for specialty programs. So that's really what the topic tonight is going to be about. And one of the concerns, I think, like any good building principals, we have all the elementary principals on our group, they've been figuring out how to make it work in the buildings. And I think there was some concern from the committee about whether or not that was not a future look at the facilities rather than just how can we make it work. So we spent quite a bit of time, we actually started that discussion with the principals last fall and then reheated it again at the request of the committee. And I'm going to go through in some detail the assumptions that we talked about. Again, just a quick review, elementary space capacity is largely based on the number of home rooms in a building. But as you set aside room for specialty spaces, that reduces the number of home rooms that you can have. So these have a fundamental impact on the total capacity of the building, assuming, of course, that the space is a fixed quantity. One of the topics in your elementaries is the use of the stages. So as you become more full, the use of the stages has been more and more for certain programs in certain buildings. Peter Hobart and Aquila both teach band and orchestra and Susan Lindgren uses the stage for some instruction. The principals group, as we talked about this, felt it was appropriate to use the stages for instruction, but probably only certain ones, ones that aren't high incidence ones and that are appropriate for the kind of environment that a stage provides. And not all of the buildings have lifts to the stages, so that's another part of this recommendation. But basically, the idea is that you could put adaptive PE and band orchestra on the stage, that that was an appropriate use. Currently, some Spanish and other things are taught on the stage. So what this means is to get to this proposed space use, that we would need to allocate two additional rooms. And you can see the tally there, it's one at Peter Hobart and one at Aquila. Art was the next topic we talked about.
Excuse me, Paul.
Sure. Well, can I just, while you're on that, just ask, in terms of the stages being used, do they have walls built on them? I'm just, I don't want any kids falling off the stage if you're doing adaptive PE or having wheelchairs up there as you're talking about here. And so I just feel that I understand and people watching understand what's the safety factor.
Yeah, all of the stages have an operable wall on the third wall of you will have the stage, so.
And I had a question, too, Paul. There was some discussion earlier, months ago, about having fire escapes or a way for people to get out of those areas without going down the stairs or the normal entrance? Is there?
Well, you don't need, you can safely exit out of a building on stairs. That's an allowed thing by COLD. So that doesn't prevent you from using them. Access to them for disabled persons is important. And that's what I mentioned, Peter Hobart is the one that doesn't have a lift right now.
Okay, so that's what they were probably looking to is access?
Yeah, so adding that lift.
Okay. Good, thanks.
In addition, that we had the fire marshal out that did look at these spaces, Sandy, would you weigh in on that with the comments from the fire marshal, please?
Well, it's okay as long as we put those disabled accesses in and we plan on doing that for Peter Hobart and we plan on fixing for Aquila. So the fire marshal was, is always contacted when we take a look at things with this process to determine, make sure that we're in line with any codes and things that we have to abide by. So everything was fine as long as we put that disabled elevator and we should be fine with using the stage for these purposes.
So art was another specialty topic that we talked about. As you know, you have a robust art program.
One more, I'm sorry for you. So they just said band orchestra and not Spanish and that's because of the noise or the, from the gym or, because there's that wall, does it get noisy in there?
Yeah, noise is a significant factor, especially for a language, teaching a language on the stage. And in those spaces are not, I don't know how to say this quite right, but they don't have a mechanical system that's the same as a regular classroom. So the thought is that you're not up there all day long, that the mechanical system's adequate for that, but to be there for the whole periods all day, it's probably not the greatest environment, so. Art is an important program for the district. A great deal or a significant amount, I should say, of the art in elementary is taught by the homeroom teachers in the regular home rooms. And so the decision, I think, was made quite a while ago not to have a dedicated art space in the buildings. The principals' recommendation this time after weighing the option again was that having a dedicated separate space for art in the elementaries probably wasn't a good use of space. And again, that's really a status quo thing, that's not a change. The next was reading. You've had significant developments in your reading program in the last few years. And as... And as schools have filled up, that's another space that gets the squeeze. So the recommendation here is that you need about two and a half rooms, and the half is at Susan Lindgren. They have a little bit different reading program. They have a space now, and they really just need a little bit of supplemental space. But at Peter Hobart and Aquila, the recommendation of the principals was that we set aside one more room each there. ELL, similar. Most of the program, most of the schools have adequate space. The principal's recommendation is that Peter Hobart should have one more space allocated to it. They're currently in a small space in the media center. This next one, I believe we talked about at a previous meeting with you. But there's also the thought to guide these standards a little bit for buildings with a high free and reduced lunch population. And so this table suggests that if your free and reduced population is over 40%, you assign an additional room. Over 45, assign two, and an over 50, assign three. So what that means, and this really was in the capacity assumptions that we talked about earlier with you, is that three additional rooms be set aside. One at Peter Hobart and two at Aquila.
Paul, is that to have lower class size at those schools? Or what's the rationale behind that?
Sure. First of all, I should point out, this is not a standard from on high. It's something that we've suggested or used with a couple other school districts that we work with. It really is meant to recognize that schools with high free and reduced population get additional funding, and that funding goes to fund various programs. It might be reducing class size. It might be more reading programs. It might be other things. So it really just sets aside some additional space to give them some room to do that.
And why the selection of 40 and 45 and 50%?
Because it seems to work. There's, again, not a science to that. We discussed that with administration, with the principals, and with our group to come to that.
I got it, Paul. So this space that's being set aside for free and reduce, is that in addition to the Read 180 program that we were, the reading programs?
Yeah. In this proposal that we're talking about today, we counted both of those things. They're additive.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear. In addition to, or?
In addition to.
In addition to.
Just to follow, as I understand what you just said, it's because there are typically more programs or you're either lower, you're using the money for something, and so that usually requires extra space. And that is the case, then, that you saw here? Or you apply it generically when you're doing this sort of thing?
I want to be candid and say, we have not done some scientific study of how you're using space and how you're allocating your Title I money. It's simply an allocation to give some breathing room to it, so. I can't give you a more precise answer than that, other than it seems to fit.
The principals know, though, don't they?
Yeah.
What, class size reduction money is used? So that's Title II money that is used at Peter Hobart and Aquila to bring down the class size.
But is that resulting in extra space, though?
Yeah, well, yes. That is an extra classroom. Two, actually, two classrooms at Aquila and one at Peter Hobart for class size reduction money. And it's limited based on how much money that we get. And then, in addition, what they found was that at Aquila that they are combining their EL program and Read 180, but they're trying to figure out how to maximize because students with greater needs need more programming. So they need additional time, and so that provides for that.
And where do we know? Susan Lindgren's got to be approaching the 40%. It's getting close, isn't it?
I don't, actually, I don't think so. I think they're under 30 currently.
Well, it's 37. That's my last recollection when we saw it, but...
Then I stand corrected. Let's say that I don't know, and I'll get back to you.
Paul, I had a question on the ELL at Peter Hobart. You had said, I'm sorry, I didn't ask it earlier. But so currently, they have a partition wall, right? Is there going to be a permanent wall put into there, or?
No, our desire would be to free up that space and turn it back into media center space and put them in another space. That's what this standard would suggest.
And then use this overage on the free and reduce for adding another space there? Is that what your intention is?
Again, everything in here is additive. So none of these are overlapping suggestions. Each room that I'm suggesting be allocated is in addition to the other ones in here. So they total.
Add another room. Okay.
Does that make sense?
Gotcha. Thanks.
Paul, before you go on, just, because we're sort of on this, you had said that Susan Lindgren does not have a Read 180 program, and we know that's really successful. Is that because of its, why doesn't it? Is it because of the funding, or is it because of the Title I funding, or?
Read 180 is used with special ed and with special populations, but it isn't a universal program like it is at the two title schools. And that's been based on what the learner needs have been with the school staff.
So if the percentage, the free and reduce lunch percentage changed at Susan Lindgren, if it were to go up, then there might be a need for that program there? And at least, as I understand your proposal, you're assuming it's not going to go up because we're not adding a room for that at Susan Lindgren, based on the current update that you're giving us?
Yeah, it's, you know, there's a lot of speculation that goes into all this, and part of it is based on enrollment projections. It's hard to project programs into the future without having some definite district plan to follow. So we're not projecting additional reuse of buildings in the future. And then Jim's face was another topic that came up. I think it's the principal's suggestion that all-day K puts additional pressure on gyms. We talked about that at length. Gym is generally not taught by specialists, so it's not a specialist away from the homeroom class. It's a lot more the kindergarten teacher taking them to gym. So it's just, it's a place to go to have large muscle activity. I think every one of the principals would say that more gym space is good, but none of them could recommend that something like building additional gym space was warranted at this time. So no change is recommended there. And the last piece, I have to say, this is probably a suggestion more from the committee than the principals, but they wanted to make sure that we include the lunchroom at Peter Hobart on here. We've talked about that in this, with the board before. It is below the MDE guidelines. It's a relatively small lunchroom space compared to the size of the building and the number of students it serves. So we're mentioning that here.
And what are the MDE guidelines? Is it per child in the school?
Yeah, it's 10 to 12 square foot per student served. And generally, you don't, it's not the whole population of the school. It's whatever you have in one lunch period. Our general rule of thumb is you divide the population by three. Base it around three lunches. You don't quite do it that way, but, because you do continuous feed. But that, I don't remember the square footage additional. I had that figured out last year, but it is below the guidelines. And then this is just a summary of all the spaces that we just talked about. And what that means is that there's about eight and a half additional rooms that our standard would suggest. Some of those we had allocated in our previous capacity exercise. So the net, I think, is about five rooms different than we talked about before. And here, you can see an updated capacity versus enrollment summary for that. The potential capacity column here now reflects this assumptions that we just put into it. And you can see that that takes you from being right around zero, if you remember the last capacity report, to about 131 spaces short. And you can compare the two columns there, enrollment versus potential capacity. And so that obviously puts additional pressure on whatever options the facility committee comes up with to recommend. Those are additional classrooms that we need to figure out how to address. Are there any questions? I was going to move on to some of the options that we're starting to talk about.
I'm sorry, I know you went, the net of the five, is that, was that the Read 180 rooms, or what was the deduct there on the eight rooms? The eight and a half rooms?
What was the deduct? I'm sorry.
Well, you said there's a net of five.
Yeah, some of these, some of these things were identified in the previous report. For instance, Spanish on the stage was one that we had identified before, so it's not a new, it's not a change from our last report, basically.
Paul, if I'm trying to understand, how many rooms you currently are thinking for each of the elementaries? Do I look at this summary of space impacts and just break out a little chart there? And would that be right?
Well, that will give you some idea. It certainly depends on the options that we look at. There's different ways to solve that. So the answer's not black and white. It depends on, it depends. Any other questions, otherwise? I just wanted to touch a little bit sort of on options that are under discussion. Again, the committee's not quite done with its work. We're hoping to come to some resolution this week at our meeting. But some of the options on the table, and I'm just doing a 50,000-foot view of them here, are one that I've called Central Elementary. Central is your biggest elementary building, potentially. It's also got a school in it that has its enrollment size capped by district policy. But if a way were found to allow that school to get bigger, whether it was switched with another school or if its policy was changed around it, that building could get quite large. Theoretically, up to about 1,000 students. And that would allow you some flexibility in accommodating student growth into the future.
Does that mean getting, moving out community ed?
Yep, there would be a secondary impact of what you would do with community ed. So there's costs associated with that as well.
I mean, so if we're going to agree that we're not going to cut those programs and house them, do we have somewhere else to house them, then, without opening, say, senior manor?
You will in the option that we bring to you. Yeah, it will be our intent to account for that. So there's some kind of a cost to that. I should say that these are not necessarily all options the group's going to recommend. These are sort of the ones that are left on the table that are deemed as somehow viable. The next one is opening another school. I've labeled it quite generically. And the idea is that it could either be an additional K5 school or it could be a K center. And that obviously would drive, the size would be variable. There's impacts of that, of course. Another one would be to revert to the previous planning options. If you remember, the most significant aspect of that was larger class sizes. But by switching class sizes, along with offering less all-day kindergarten, you could likely fit within your existing buildings. Continue the status quo is always an option. There's obviously implications to that. And then the final one, add on to one or more elementaries to meet your needs, which has obviously capital costs. All of the options have impacts, pros and cons. That's what we're working on with the committee now, is weighing the pros and cons as part of the recommendation. And we anticipate in the next week here to be making recommendations to the superintendent for further development.
Any more questions for Paul? Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Fiscal Year 2013 Integration Revenue Budget Update. And Dr. Bowers will kick that off.
Indeed, I will. We are required by the Department of Education of submitting an integration budget by March 15th of this year. But that's while knowing that the legislature has not decided what they plan on doing with integration budgets. So as you look through the narrative, you can see that what I am proposing to the board is that we keep it as is. The use of our dollars has been meeting the needs of students from our ninth grade transition program to having Natalie assist at the middle school. We've had a variety of great programs that have been covered. And so we put in some additional money for a 2% increase with salaries, but it really is a status quo budget that I'm proposing at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. Now, at this time, we'll move along. The quarterly financial update.
Well, I know this is probably hard to see, but hopefully, it shows up better on the viewing audience. This is something that I had started a few years back. It shows a quarterly statement comparing this year at this point in time, as of December 31st, to the prior year, as of December 31st. Because basically, what happens with school district funding is you can pretty well know how your spending pattern is going compared to the prior year's spending pattern. And what I do is I compare the actual spend as of December 31st to the budgets. And looking at the analysis that I did on this particular report, there's, the budget amendments, of course, are not included in this at this point in time because we have not approved them. So that's going to have an effect on that bottom line. So even though it's showing that we're spending slightly more than the prior year, if we put those budget amendments, that's going to make a difference, too. But I did notice, and between line items, there's some differences, too, where there might be budgets in for severance in regular education, for instance, but the actual severance expenses ended up going in a different program line item. So a lot of that had been happening throughout the, in comparison to the prior years. But I did notice that we did have more spending as of this particular time period in our severance as well as our workers' compensation. So that's something that we're going to be taking a look at to see, make sure that, how that affects us at the end of the year is, still remains to be seen. But we do have a severance reserve in place in case there's something that flows over, more so than it was in the past year. But otherwise, what I see, other than that, and the severance and the workers' compensation, is that we're, otherwise, we're in line with where we were at the prior year.
Any questions? Thank you, Sandy. But you're not going to go too far. The next item on the agenda, Sandy will address, the District Bond Projects Update.
And first of all, what I'm going to go through is what we spent in our last bond referendum as of February of 2013. We, this really hasn't changed much since I last showed it back in September. There might be a few other line items that occurred, such as the senior high piping, which we did a wing in the senior high here and replaced some piping. Other than that, I'm just going to let you read through some, and I did give you, as a board, some more detail behind this of what this comprises of. But so far, we've spent $10,825,000 as of February of 2013. And I'll just let you graze through there. Lot of tuck pointing, lot of the deferred maintenance items that we had said that we were going to do.
And Sandy, while it is on the TV screen and the people at home can see it, could you just walk us down through the largest projects there?
Sure. We did some remodeling projects district-wide, various projects to remodel classrooms, et cetera. District-wide HVAC had to do a lot with our recommissioning in making sure that our air quality was to the standards. We did a lot of flooring. As you remember, we also had a lot of asbestos abatements going on a few years back. And we had Inspect come in and take a look at our parking lot and concrete needs as well as our tuck pointing. And it was determined that we needed some parking lot work and concrete work district-wide, as well as tuck pointing for our senior high and our junior high. A lot of work here at the senior high. There's a few, and then probably one of the other bigger items is our 21st century technology, which Tom Larbo worked on in getting 21st technology in our classrooms.
Thank you. Okay. Further questions on the capital items? All right?
I still got more. Yep.
All right, go ahead, Jim.
And this just gives you an...
Sandy, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
On this. Oh, I'm sorry, this is more on this report. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is what remains still. There's close to $500,000 that we're still spending. We were a little bit worried about not spending it at a particular time because of arbitrage, but I talked to our financial advisors, and there is no worry about arbitrage because of the interest rates. So we can, we do have some more time to spend it, which we do intend to do by the end of this year. A lot of it had to do, has to do with the security upgrades. We're advancing, enhancing more upon our security updates beyond what we had originally planned, because we got some funding sources available to do that, as well as there's some slight projects for roofing and HVAC that we still would like to finish up on. And there is some remaining invoice for the piping that occurred. So with all those projects, we do intend to finish this up here in the next, by the next summer.
Just a couple of points on that. One is, so the arbitrage is the point that the interest we're getting, where the money's sitting, is so low that we're not worried about what we're gonna make.
Yeah, 'cause if-
We're not gonna hit the limit.
The interest expense will exceed the, and arbitrage, you know, it's, even if you have to pay it in, it just shows that you're making, you know, you're making the amount of money that you, you know, you have to pay it back, of course, but if you make more money than what you actually expense out for interest, that isn't always necessarily a bad thing either. But at this point, we don't anticipate that that's gonna happen.
And when you said that we're, you were a little worried, spending that it was more of a time-
Yeah.
-factor rather than quantity of projects or something to that effect?
It was making sure that we weren't earning so much interest within that timeframe.
No, I understand that's the arbitrage issue.
Yeah.
But then you made a comment that preceded that, something to the effect that we were a little worried about-
Yeah.
You meant that as more of a timing issue as opposed to, hey, we gotta find projects to spend this on.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
We have plenty lined up that we're actually still gathering.
Absolutely.
Right, but so it was more of a, hey, we gotta get a bid. Do we have to get a bid and out? I mean, we got the projects, it's a question of timing.
And when, as we're doing projects of this magnitude with this amount of dollars, you wanna make sure you have enough funding source at the end of the projects to be able to do some of the projects. So at the beginning of the, of doing the projects, you don't do as much as you would have originally wanted to do at that point in time, just to make sure you have the funding source, such as with the security. And now we've found out we've had enough money to be able to enhance it even further.
Thank you.
Just for those out in TV land, the importance of this can't be overemphasized. We have over a million square feet worth of roofs, parking lots. It's just incredible. So with the amount that we spend on our capital and the due diligence with which Sandy puts the contractors through, with which we look at all of the items that we need done, with deferred maintenance that happens in everybody, making sure we have enough money and have enough money left over in order to complete these projects and do some of the extra things that we wanna do, having a reserve to a contractor is like throwing red meat out in front of a lion. But the fact is that these have been managed extremely well, and we appreciate the diligence that you put into it, Sandy. Thank you.
And this one here has to do with what's going to be left over after all of this current bond is going to be spent. So this list here shows, and hopefully we can view it a little bit better at the viewing audience, shows, we did an analysis based on information that we received from each building, Buildings and Grounds Coordinator, who talked to their building principals, to come up with projects that are remaining, as well as we had Inspect come in and take a look at our parking lots and our tuck pointing, et cetera. So there's a lot of deferred maintenance that we anticipate still gonna be needed after this bond expires. And here's a list by building. We actually broke it down between a Priority 1 and a Priority 2. The Priority 2 is basically adding to what we already have, whereas Priority 1 is fixing what we already had and maintaining what we already have, such as the tuck pointing, the roofs, parking lots. Priority 2 has to do with adding air conditioning in some buildings that don't have it, or, and there was a few other items at the junior high that they wanted to add.
So, wait, if I understand that right, so was Priority 1, were there items that we would have liked to fit under the first $12 million? We just didn't get, our funds were exhausted prior to reach that? They were already on the list for the preceding capital bond?
Well, all of these, basically, this was a reevaluation. We evaluated it in 2008 to come up with the deferred maintenance items that we recognized at that point in time. Now that this bond is expiring, we reevaluate it now to see where are we at now and what needs do we have now for deferred maintenance items? And there's, all these listed items are, including the Priority 1 and 2, include all of those items that were identified at each building. However, what I did was I broke it down between different priorities, of course, which could change, dependent on what everybody feels the needs could be, or should be, to determine the bottom line as far as where we might wanna go with it.
And I guess, part of the point is, we do get some annual dollars from the state for capital, but it doesn't even cover-
No.
I mean, even a quarter of what our annual deferred maintenance needs are, or, I mean, I just threw that quarter out there, I don't even know what's that.
A lot of the operating capital is already spent. There might be a few hundred thousand dollars that might be available, might be available to spend on a roof here and there, or what have you, but it's not going to touch these projects very much.
Are we ready to move on to the-
We are.
Okay, good. Thank you, Sandy, and once again, thank you for your diligence on these subjects. Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2013 budget amendments discussion. These are the items that we will approve at the, in the action agenda later on.
Usually we do this in January, but we are doing it now because we had a lot of other things on our agenda. But these, this is an analysis that we do at the middle of the year to determine what our fiscal year 2013 budget amendment should be. At the time of developing our budgets, of course, we know more now than what we did last in April or May. So what I did is did an analysis on the enrollment to come up with what we estimate at this point in time, what our enrollment is going to be. And looking at our enrollment of what it was last year compared to where we think it is now, we think it's pretty comparable to at least last year's enrollment. We did a budget assumption during the budget process of 5,000 Waddams, and now we're gonna be adding 140 additional Waddams, which comes, brings us another 731,000 of additional revenue. However, I did an analysis on the special ed revenue and noticed that our overall tuition, which goes through the statewide system and is deducted off the special ed revenue, has increased over these last few years. And we need to reflect that increase, which of course decreases our revenue for the two years, which the prior year adjustment I anticipate to be 200,000, and the current year adjustment I expect to be 160,000. But for the current year, I did, if you look on the expenses, offset that decrease in revenue by a decrease in expenditure. Because as the revenue decreases, there was more budgets in the expenditure than what we needed. And therefore, the total revenue increase was 371,000. Going to the expenditures during the beginning of the year, because we anticipated that there was going to be an increase in general education revenue, we did add salaries and staff at the beginning of the year. And with the salary and benefit increases, as well as net of salary turnover, we're adding another 350,000 for those expenditures. But we also, because we do a lot of hedging in our fuel, which we have a consultant who actually takes a look at the logistics of the fuel, the fuel or the gas, they actually do an analysis and have us buy it ahead of time, which helps the cost of the fuel, and has been doing considerably well during the last few years. So therefore, we're decreasing our fuel budget by 250,000. We did start a lot of programs in the senior high in particular, which has really decreased our ALC tuition cost over these last few years. And the programs appear to be working since we found that we can decrease our ALC tuition by 250,000. Looking at electricity, however, those costs are going up. So therefore, we had to increase that slightly by 15,000. And our liability insurance is going up also, which we found out this last October. So we're increasing that by another 25,000. So, and then, of course, that tuition savings offsets the current year special ed revenue increase, or decrease, I'm sorry. But the total expense decrease was 285,000, therefore bringing the increase in the unreserved by 656,000.
Thank you, Sandy. For those of you who truly enjoy school financing, sorry that part's over, or at least till we vote here. Right now, Andy Ewald will talk to us about the, what we're looking at for athletic conferences.
I'm Andy Ewald. I'm the district's athletic director. And I'm here tonight to talk about potential conference alignment options that are out there for us as a school. Where we are right now, we are currently in the North Suburban Conference. We've been there since the fall of 2005. Next year, we're losing three schools from our current conference. North Branch, Shisago Lakes, and St. Francis are leaving to join another conference. While that helps us from a transportation standpoint, from a competitive standpoint, there are three schools that are leaving that we feel like are good fit for us from a competitive standpoint. So with the gain of them leaving, because of them being a little bit further away, we're also losing three schools of the other 10 that we compete well against and have good relationships with. Thus, that will leave eight schools for next year, including us. And within that eight, you kinda have some polar opposite ends. You have Totino and Benil, those two private schools on one end of the spectrum. And then you have Fridley and Columbia Heights on the other end of the spectrum, where they struggle, even with programs being seventh grade through 12th grade, to fill out multiple levels of teams. And where that affects us as a school is, say, somebody like Columbia Heights, they only offer varsity girls soccer, even though they have 7th through 12th graders playing it. That leaves us three levels of teams that either don't get a game, or we have to go out and try to find games for, for our ninth graders, our 10th graders, and our JV teams. So you've kind of got that polar opposite end of the other seven schools. Of the ones that are left that share a lot of similarities with us, there's Robinsdale Cooper, there's Irondale, and there's Spring Lake Park. So that's the, that would be the eight left for next year. And with that eight, there are two of them that are already applying and looking at other conferences to join. So even within the eight, there's instability with, like I said, two of the other eight having already applied to other conferences to look at something different to do. So since last spring, well, starting last spring, I was called by Chaska and Chan-Hassan's athletic directors and invited to a meeting out at Chan-Hassan. And since that time, we've probably had, gosh, eight or nine meetings out at Chan-Hassan from last spring till now, where it's been the athletic directors from Chaska, Chan-Hassan, Richfield, Bloomington Kennedy, Bloomington Jefferson, and Cooper, really coming together and just talking about what's working, what's not working, and what similarities those seven schools share. And it's been, it's been interesting. I'll throw some data up. And I don't know how hard it is to see or read, but it's really looking at, it's looking at enrollment numbers. We've looked at students of color, free and reduced lunch numbers, special ed numbers, ELL percentages, and then also looking at, within our high schools, just strictly from an athletic standpoint, what's our rate of participation? What's our unduplicated participation rate to see how similar we are as schools? And through this process, we're at a point now where we feel like the seven schools would be a good fit coming together after, from last spring till now, really talking from a philosophy standpoint, looking at our demographics. I touched on it earlier about travel. And our current trips in the current conference, our one-way trip is 22 miles, and that's including Benil, just being right down the road from us. Looking at the six other schools, Chaska, Chan, Kennedy, Jefferson, Cooper, and Richfield, our one-way trip would be just barely over 12 miles. It also brings us back potentially together with some old rivals. Richfield was in the Classic Lake Conference. I believe they left the Classic Lake Conference four years prior to us leaving. And also with Jefferson and Kennedy being schools that, when we were back in the Lake Conference, they were old Lake Conference members as well. In terms of offerings, the other six schools offer everything that we do. They actually have a few more programs athletically than we do. And from an arts and activities standpoint, they have everything that we offer as well. So from a programmatic standpoint, looking at joining up with these six other schools in terms of offerings for our students would not be a step backwards in any kind of way. When we, when we left the Classic Lake Conference, we really looked at it for a few main reasons. One was philosophically, the schools that we left were either in a different direction or heading in a different direction than we were. From a facility standpoint, they were definitely going a different direction. An enrollment standpoint, they were definitely at a different spot than we were. And you couple all those things together, and really from a competitive standpoint, it was just a no-brainer for us at that time to make the change. Bob Laney, who was the principal at the time, I still remember him and I talking about it, that whatever the next step was, we kind of talked about and looked at as it would be a stepping stone probably to something else. And I look at this and go, gosh, we've been here since 2005. Our programs across the board have gotten stabilized. We've had some success. We've had success in programs, and it's the way it should be, that if you've got a good strong class of kids, those teams should have a chance to be successful. If you don't, you should be middle of the pack or down below. So it ebbs and flows with the classes of kids. I look at these other six schools, and I see the same thing with them. There's not a program with any of the other six of them that you look at and go, gosh, even if we have our best team, we'll never be able to compete with them. Or you don't look at any of them and go, they've got a rogue program out there kind of operating however they want it, when it, when it all costs. I think there are six other schools where philosophically, they see the value in participation and that ultimately, it's not the end result, it's how you kinda go about getting there. And they share that same approach and outlook on things. So I guess, you know, me being up here now, my recommendation would be to the board that we look at for the fall of 2014, next year- we look at for the fall of 2014, next year, we would still be in the North Suburban Conference, but for the fall of 2014, one, being proactive because of the, you know, instability in our current conference, but two, just making sure we're doing the right thing for now and for down the road with with our community. But it would be to look at joining up with those other six schools and forming a new conference.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions?
Jim? Just could you just talk a minute about process? Because you did a lot of process before you left last time. I know you've been out talking to some groups, and maybe you just highlight where we are and then also what the timing is to make this decision.
Sure. I've had plenty of I've been pretty transparent with Mr. Metz, with our coaches, with community members, you know, as as there's been information to share from last spring till now, and obviously in the last couple of months, there's been a lot more, being able to share because this is really starting to has a chance to be formalized. Dr. Bowers asked Mr. Metz and myself a couple, maybe a month and a half ago, in her office, what are the drawbacks to it? And really, the only thing Rob and I could come up with, and I've asked students as well, and coaches, and parents, and community members, is just change is probably the only negative, you know, that people really can see. Now, we have a program here or there where now in this conference, we're kind of the top dog, and moving to that group of schools might make it more challenging for us. But I think the coaches that I've talked to have all said they're they get the big picture of that, that it's not just about their sport, and again, that there's not that program within that mix of schools that you go, gosh, we'll never win, we'll never win another girl swim championship. Well, there's some good swim teams with those other schools, but we're a good program as well. So, you know, it's it's been constant dialogue with people out in the community, and I've gotten nothing negative back, Jim.
Andy, this sounds like a really good opportunity, having heard what you have to say. And one of the things I I do like about it is is the closer schools that will be playing at, having had a child who played on the hockey team and played on the track team and and done some of that commuting, when we were going all the way up to North Branch and and Chaska and St. Francis, and especially when we take one bus up there, so everybody has to go and everybody spends the whole night. It was really hard for the kids to get their homework done.
Yep.
To actually get their academics in because they were losing entire nights on the road and up there, in addition to the added costs to the district.
Yep.
So what excites me about this, amongst everything else you've said, is that I really think it will help our kids be able to keep up with their academics and participate in sports.
Well, and I think, too, you look at that grouping of communities, and most of them really look like us and will probably continue to change as we change. When you're looking at, you know, parts of Bloomington, when you're looking at Richfield, when you're looking at Robinsdale, they're going through the same changes that we're going through. And that's those similarities, I I think, are exciting and would lend us to being together for a long time as a group.
Andy, is there a name for the new conference? Or what do you what do you I mean, if this goes ahead, what's the process for those sorts of nitty-gritty details?
We're meeting again Wednesday, and we've kind of got it down to a final four or five if this actually happens. And you asked, I think, Jim, you asked before about process. Ideally, sometime next week, if this is something that the board decides for St. Louis Park is a good thing, the group really there's when you have five different communities or school districts, everybody's at a different point in this process. There's some that are already signed on the dotted line two months ago because they want this to happen. They're being respectful of us and a couple other communities in terms of us wanting to make sure our process is our process and not being sped up because they're at a different place. What we would like to do is when we get to the point of if if the board decides this is a good thing for us to do, is we would announce that we're coming together as a group. We would have that name that we hopefully will figure out this Wednesday at a meeting at Chanhassen. And then our plan is that we would involve each of the seven schools to come up with a logo. And for St. Louis Park, we I would turn it over to our student body, and we would have a contest, there would be some sort of prize, to come up with a logo for the conference. And then I would take that winning logo back to the other six schools, and then collectively, we would have seven logos to choose from and pick one of those seven to be the logo for the new conference. So that way, it's giving our students, you know, ahead of the game, you know, a year in, you know, a year ahead of time, a chance to have some ownership into this as well.
Other questions? Okay, Nancy, one more.
This is not on this topic, though, so if anybody else had. Andy, before you leave us, we're ending we're ending the winter season. Any sports teams, conferences coming up you want to flag us to be watching for? I know boys basketball has been doing well.
Boys basketball's been doing well. We play Robinsdale Cooper here tomorrow night. We lost to them by a point at their place three weeks ago. If we win this game Tuesday and then beat Beniled here Friday, we can tie for the conference championship. So tomorrow night's a big game for them. Girls basketball plays tomorrow night at Minnetoka in the first round of playoffs. Boy swimming, we had one boy advance onto the state swim meet after this past weekend. It was Thursday and then Saturday for sections. Nordic ski, we had one skier place well up at the state meet. We're an extremely young Nordic ski team, so we're excited about that. Gymnastics, we had great numbers for participation, and the winter's winding down, and then we'll be into springs. Synchro starts next Monday, so spring sports already start next week.
Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is the calendar discussion. Kimberly Hergat, our HR director, will kick it off with support from Dr. Bowers.
Good evening, board and Dr. Bowers. I would like to first start by talking a little bit about the fact, as we all know, that calendar is a very important part of our school process. And there have been lots of discussions around it. We have many stakeholders. We have staff, we have parents, we have community members. And so we try to take all those pieces into account when we're determining how we're going to move forward with scheduling for the next two years. In your board packets that you received on Friday, you should have received information about just the details of the survey that we put out to parents. We had and community, excuse me, we had about 64 responses from them specifically. We did share last time that from our teacher group, we had about 250 responses. They did their own survey on their own outside of our district process. So I think a lot of the folks that may have had some input on our survey spoke to their teacher leadership. One thing that you will notice that is, and it's the only change from the last calendar that you saw, is that we have changed the first day of kindergarten for 2013-14 school year. It will actually be a day earlier than we typically have kindergarten. And I know one of the concerns that has risen is how will we provide the conference time for families, because that's very important prior to our children starting kindergarten with St. Louis Park schools. And the district is committed to providing that additional time, so we will be providing our teachers who teach half-day kindergarten twice a day with an additional payday to schedule those conferences. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Kimberly, can you just refresh me on how the teachers came down? My memory is that there were the majority of the teachers, but I don't remember what the split was in votes, preferred the traditional calendar. But what was the what were the percentages?
Certainly, there were 250 responses. 181 teachers chose the traditional calendar, and 69 chose the option two, which is the shortened holiday break in the winter with an earlier release date.
And?
Julie?
I at one at the PTO meeting I was at a couple of weeks ago, one of the staff members indicated her vote had less to do with the length of the breaks than trying to avoid when we have having the last day of school on on Mondays. So she was in favor of the traditional calendar. But I know that's something that comes up in some of the parent comments, too. We're limited on when we can start, and then depending how long you choose for breaks, it affects the end date because we're looking for a set number of days, student contact days, right?
Correct. That number is 174 student contact days. We don't have to reduce our student contact days for our early release and late starts.
And we have to have 174. We have to stay with that number that we've been at.
Correct.
So we can't just say, okay, if it 174th day is Monday, let's just cancel school. We have to have that day. And the option of adding more days is gets involved in contract arrangements as well, right?
It can. It can. Our teachers are required under contract 185 days, and then I believe it's 25 days of staff development in there. So it's we could take a look at it if we were looking to add days. But yes, it is a contractual issue.
I'm not sure that those people who didn't like ending on Mondays would like it better to end on Tuesday, so I'm not really suggesting it. But that's where we get into these awkward dates is.
Correct.
You know, if we could play with the start date, we might have more flexibility. But how long you spend for a break pretty much determines what we do at the end of the year.
Correct. You know, we have a very strong history of having a two-week winter holiday break, a week of spring break, and then we contractually have days that are considered holidays, not just in our teacher's contract, but also in our support staff contracts. So we have to honor those days as well, so that also whittles down the number of days that we have available to schedule students to be in session.
Yeah, I just wanted to get out that there are the all those fact, a lot of factors that we're looking at, and while our priority should be, and I think is, is trying to do what's best for the students, there are a lot of details in making that assessment.
Ken?
On the teacher days that they need for Eva for development days, are those designated full days? Or so when you have early release, late starts, are those considered teachers' development days, a full day, or is that a half a day?
Very good question. They are considered the early release and late starts are not considered part of those contractual days for staff development. So it would be the full release days. And others things that come into factor as well is that when we have conferences, then we have time because teachers are working such long days that we have some return time for them. So there there are so many, for the lack of a better word, idiosyncrasies that we deal with with, you know, multiple contracts. Did that answer your question?
It did, but it ponders me with another question in that the so those early release late starts, those are in addition to the training that we the 25 days of training.
Correct.
Any other questions? Dr. Bowers?
Given the data that we have collected, both from staff and from parents, it's one of those things that there isn't an exact one right answer. And as long as that we continue to have state statute that says that we cannot start earlier, that we have to start after Labor Day, it makes it really difficult while if people want to get out in June earlier in order to make it work. I know that last time that we met, we talked about AMSD's legislative platform, and one of the things on their platform is to allow school districts to start earlier than Labor Day. We don't think it's going to pass, but I'm just saying that that's another one of those parameters that we have to live with. Given that information, I would recommend at this time that we stay with our status quo as far as two weeks. I don't we also surveyed what other school districts are doing for winter break, and it's 50/50. Some have got a week and a half off, some have got two weeks off. But since that has been history in St. Louis Park, I haven't I do not see anything that compels me to say that we should change at this point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point on the agenda, we're at the consent agenda. The one point that I want to make on the consent agenda is an appointment that we have. Clarence Pollak, who has been our interim principal at Aquila, is being named to the position as elementary principal. So we're taking the interim off of his title. He is appointed as the principal of Aquila School, and we are very pleased with that. Thank you, Clarence. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Yes. Yep, it does.
The consent agenda includes, well, first, kudos, Clarence. You know, we have principals that go above and beyond, and Clarence helped jump a car recently, and we just saw we just saw Corey Maslowski from PSI help move a piano. So in addition to being great educational leaders, they go above and beyond. On the consent agenda, there are minutes, and I just wanted to flag the board that we have some revised minutes from the February 7th meeting, just so everybody's aware, and and February 11th meeting. And I know the change in the February 7th meeting is we're in the midst of a superintendent search, and what we added to the February 7th meeting was the fact that the MSBA person that came to speak with us also gave us a proposal on how they might assist as a search firm. And so that if anybody's looking at our minutes down the road, they'll know that if you put them all together, we had three different search firms present to us.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, motion to approve. Moved by Larry. Second by Ken. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Six oh vote. Thank you. We are now into the action agenda, and the first item on the action agenda, I will entertain a motion. It is recommended that the board approve the FY 2014 integration revenue budget as presented. Motion? Moved by Julie. Second. Second by Jim. Any questions? Discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Six oh vote. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the school calendars. It is recommended that the board approve the amended 2013, 2014, 2014, 2015 school calendars as presented. Need a motion to that effect? Thank you, Ken. Larry?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further discussion at this point? Okay.
Just what's the motion to approve?
The traditional.
It is recommended the board approve the amended. Yeah, it is the traditional, the two-week. The traditional is the two-week vacation.
With the new start date.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, with the new start date. And Cindy, that should be included in the motion.
The new start date has been kindergarten in the first year.
Right. Okay. All right, yeah. Nancy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I this matters to everybody, as we've learned, and it's it's really, I think we've talked about it's a hard, hard choices, but when when and I don't like that the last day of school is on a Monday. I really think that's so. I don't like that. I don't see another way around it. I know we've looked for it, and we haven't found it, and I hope we keep looking, other than shortening whenever our vacation day, vacation weeks. And when I've thought about that for the 2014 calendar is one option there. You know, people travel, and they go visit their families, and they don't all just drive to Anoka. Some of them travel, many people in this district have international families and travel to visit their families. And so you really start interfering with that recharging family break time. And so, you know, I'm going to support the the traditional calendar, but I really am sad about the Monday, last day of school. And I really would encourage the administration to work with the principals so that if our students have, you know, special circumstances, camps that sometimes start because we're not done yet, or some, you know, those kinds of things, that they can take their their tests earlier and get released if they need to. I really would like you to encourage that with the principals and make that happen. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Just a comment. We're going to keep asking. We appreciate the input that people gave, and we're going to upset some people because we're going to go another way, but, and we should keep asking, because if there is a compelling reason, and we find, and then that something may occur in some season, but it's just difficult. It splits, and, and I guess I didn't add up the comments that we read, but they, they just made the point. Some would rather have a shorter vacation and get out earlier, and some like the traditional. So there's really not a right answer, but I appreciate us being flexible and, and looking at the holidays and stuff, and trying to get our start dates right and stuff, so, thanks.
And I just add one more comment to that. I happen to teach a Sunday school class of junior high kids from Edina, Chan-Hassan, Minnetonka, all over, several of whom had these shortened vacations. I have not heard that much griping and groaning from any group. As Jim mentioned, we, we will continue to go out for input. We appreciate it, but we get back both ways. And, and again, we understand there are strengths and weaknesses of both systems, and ending on a Monday, we've said it before, if we can figure out a way around that, we will. But the fact is that we've heard a lot, this, this two-week vacation seems to work for our community, and we're going to stick with it. With that, all those in favor of the motion, as it was changed, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Six oh vote. Last item on our agenda is the approval of the fiscal year 2013 budget amendments. As Sandy presented them, it is recommended that the board approve the 2013 budget assumptions as presented. Motion to that effect?
So moved.
Moved by Nancy, second by Jim.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Six oh vote. Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain communications and transmittals. And I'm going to start off, because I couldn't say it any better, with, with the presentation that we had of Les Miserables. Between that music and the dedication of those kids and the leadership of the teachers, I really want to thank them for coming tonight, and I encourage everyone to come to the show. Come several times.
Want to mention anything about the listening sessions?
Ah, thank you. We are. The next listening session by the board will be either Nancy and I, and Ken and I at, at Susan, I'm sorry, at Peter Hobart in the cafeteria Wednesday from 7:00 to 8:30. And we will honor everyone's time. We will begin on time, and we will end on time. And we look forward to talking with our constituents. The, and I had my list here, the next one is, yeah, oh, and Nancy just reminded me, if no one is there within a half hour, then we'll, we'll cut it off at that point in time. But that is at Peter Hobart in the cafeteria at 7:00 this Wednesday.
For an hour and a half.
For an hour and a half. Yep. Okay. The one after that is on the 13th of March. That will be Joe and, Joe and Jim? Yep, sorry. No?
I'm in April.
Oh, you're, you're in April.
It's either Ken or me.
Okay, again, Ken or Nancy, they're flip-flopping. Sorry. That one will be at Susan Lindgren, and that will also be at 7:00. Again, if no one is there within a half hour, we'll adjourn, but it'll run an hour and a half, and we will respect people's time. The, the last one is on April 9th. Now I got it right. Jim, that, that's you. And, and Joe. Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't get it right yet. My notes are here somewhere in all this paper. Okay. And this is a 5:00 meeting. This is at the middle school. It is a 5:00 meeting. Again, will last an hour and a half, and same rules apply. We take input, we take this seriously, and this gives the opportunity for a dialogue with the constituency, and we love to have you all come out. So, thank you all. Any further transmit, train, yeah, discussion? None appearing, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Larry.
Second.
Second by Ken. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Six oh vote.